All right, folks, if I could. This evening, we are going to start with a public hearing. Typically, this would be when I would call the meeting to order and that we would have our invocation and pledge of allegiance. But from time to time, we have the opportunity to host public hearings. And this evening happens to be one of those, so we typically do these at the front end of the meeting. Tonight's public hearing is held in regards to the notice of public hearing for the Greenville County Program Year 2021 Annual Program Plan for the City of Greer. City of Greer participates in the Greenville County Community Development Block Grant Program and Home Incentive Partnerships Programs, which are funded by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. We are privileged to be joined this evening by Ama Imam Wabadu, who is the Program Director with the G-C-R-A. And I know that you would rather hear about these programs from her than from me, and she knows a lot more about them than I do anyway. So we welcome her this evening to our public hearing. This is also an opportunity, after she speaks, if you have come this evening to speak in regards to the 2021 program, to do so. So the floor is yours, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. My name is Aman Wabadu. I'm the Program Director for the G-C-R-A. And thank you for having us here to talk about the funding for City of Greer. The annual action plan. But first, I'll talk about G-C-R-A, the Greenville County Redevelopment Authority. We're established in 1974, and the purpose is basically to help administer the federal funds that come to the county. County being an urban county. It allows you to have federal funds. You're more than 200,000 population. We're over close to 500. So we do get three major funding sources. That's the Community Development Block Grant, the Home Investment Partnership, and Emergency Solutions Grant. And in order to administer these funds, we have a partnership between Greenville County and the five participating municipalities, Greer being one of them, Fountain Inn Molding, Traveler's Rest, Simpsonville. And this is a three-year annual renewal of that contract. And we're governed by three members appointed by the City Council. So what is annual action plan? In order to continue to receive this funding, you have to tell HART what you're going to use your funds for. What HART does is tell you, use their formula to say, okay, Greenville County, you get X amount of money based on your total population, poverty, housing condition, and all that. And then we basically use the same formula to divvy up the funding between the five municipalities and the one in court area. This particular year, when we say fiscal year 2021, really starts July 1 of this year, 2021, to June 30 of 2022. Currently, we're in fiscal year 2020. And this actually marks the second year of the five-year plan. Last year, when we came to you guys and were talking to you about having the five-year strategic plan for the county, we finished that. That was basically the 2020 was the first year of this. So this is the second year of that five-year plan. And when you come to doing the five-year plan, you got to come up with housing goals, community development goals, economic development goals, homelessness goals, goals for neighborhood revitalization. So basically, having a needs assessment, addressing homelessness, addressing what type types of housing that we're going to have, basically homeownership rental, and as well as houses for seniors and special needs. Those are very important. So in doing that, each year, you're going to meet part of that five-year goal. Because at the end of five years, HART is going to determine, I gave you X amount of money. You said you're going to do this. What did you do? And I can tell you, the last five years, we actually met our housing goal. And we want to do the same this year as well. Although our housing goal was barely 1,000 plus, but we actually did analysis of impediments on the comp plan that identifies that Greenville County as a whole, when we did a housing study, identified 12,000 needs, affordable housing needs in the county. And then the comp plan, comprehensive plan that we did using CHER's data from HART, actually identified another 45,000 housing needs, excuse me, in the county. So of course, those two numbers are competing, but the main thing, it tells you that you have indigenous need to address affordable housing for every population. And as I talk about it, I'll show you the different income sizes and household and things, how those things are determined. For the purpose of this particular hearing, I'm going to focus on Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership. The third funding source, the Emergency Solutions Grant, is really for the whole county, and it basically helps us to address homelessness in the county. So that formula is not for any particular city or community. It's for everybody. But Community Development Block Grants, CDBG, and home have separate allocations for each municipality. The CDBG funding, the test is 70% of that funds that you use must address low and moderate income family. But I can tell you that consistently, at the end of each annual year, we use up to 90% of our funds or more to address low and moderate income, household, family, neighborhoods, not just infrastructure, also housing. And you could also use it to address slum and blight. And again, you can also use it to address urgent need, like what we have right now, the COVID. So that's why HART gave us additional supplemental funding to address those urgent needs, disaster for COVID, public health crisis. And in doing so, and we'll talk about different things that you can do with it. The Home Investment Partnership, funding home funds, basically is home production, supplies, making it available, making it accessible, making it attainable, making sure this, you're building houses, homeownership, rental preservation, making sure if you're making preservation of houses of persons, seniors, that you're making it possible for people to age in place. So those are the kind of things you think about. And of course, if you're doing new construction, rental, homeownership. Or also making permanent support housing for homeless, or chronic homeless clients, so that you can bring support services to them in that particular place. The City of Greer allocation, I'm sharing a three-year funding, just for you to have a look at what's been going on. Actually, Monday, Friday, we actually got the final numbers for the county. Usually takes a while to get it. We start with the year, you know, current year, 2020. But we got the final numbers, we made the adjustment. We're a little over than 2019, but less than 2020 in the actual grant funding. But your program income home continues to grow. That's because of the projects we have in Greer. As we build your, the houses, we sell them, it comes back to you as program income. So you're growing home program income to help you to build more. The CDBG is not really, we're not doing a lot of new, because we can't actually do new construction here with CDBG funding. That's not an allowable cost. You can purchase property, you can do infrastructure projects. But you have projects that have rippling effects that improve the neighborhood, and that's what we do a lot with the CDBG funds. So for this year, our fiscal year 2021, it's projected funding for 270,757 for CDBG funds. And you have a program income projection of 50,000. This is something that could change if we have somebody who sold or purchased or refinanced, the money comes back with CDBG, you get more than $50,000. The home is 103,836 in grant funds. Your program income, just in the lower end, is 293, 293,000. To sell more houses, that number goes up. And last year, I will tell you a little bit of some of the things we had to do in Quickside to kind of jump up some of the projects so that we can finish up as much, as fast as possible. So total for 2021 is projected for 717,593 for fiscal year 2021. But you also have money. This is not all you have. The funds that you didn't use past years get carried forward. So you do have more than this in your conference for the federal funds. This is the projected uses of what the, the funding, sorry, the funds will be used for. There's a little thing there. I don't know why the house jiggled away. 51% of the total funds is for new construction. You have some demo projects that we'll be doing. We also have a demo project that we'll be doing on Fairview, so a couple of those to add to what you have. We added some money to help us with that. Your sub-receipients are a total of $60,000. That's all we set aside. Sub-recipient CDBG set us a threshold. We use the city and also overall, we cannot exceed the overall 15% of the CDBG funds to come to the county. So we kind of share it and spread it out. You usually get more requests in public service than you have. So we try to find very innovative ways to make sure the money is spread out properly. Facility improvement as well for projects that we're looking to do with the city in Needmore. We'll talk about that as well. And of course, some additional funding for your CDBG for infrastructure improvement. Currently, in the past, it's funded with the COVID. We're getting a lot of requests for business loans, and it's very interesting. We just closed one, and we have two more in the conference for City of Greer. So we added two funding opportunities for at least two more businesses that were requested for loan funds. And they should be, you know, very exciting to see it happen, that people are thinking about, how do I reinvent myself with the COVID? Then we do have rental properties, so we took, put, set aside some reserves to help us with the maintenance that's going on in those properties. So that's where you have the 717, 17,593 for 2021. I talked about the five-year plan. And going through all that, we talked about different ways that will help to achieve various housing goals, because there's so many needs, and people need different things. We have what we call homeownership units, where we do our projects, G-C-R-A sponsored projects. We also have projects that we got financed, housing developers. We just finished the notice of funding for housing developers. We got about four tax credit related projects that will be got financed, financing, and three others, not really in the City of Greer for that, for this year, because it's open to everybody and every developer to apply for that. And then we have the rental, most of them with rental units. And then we have Habitat is providing funding for homeownership units. We also have what we call the First Time Home Buyer Program for everybody who do this program through Community Works Carolina. Anybody that need first-time home buyers trying to buy their first home and have a mortgage pre-approval with their house, no matter where it is, as long as you're in Greenville County or city limits of Greer, Spartanburg County, or city limits of Fountain Inn, Lawrence County, can ask and look for this down payment assistance. We provide up to $10,000 from the Community Works Carolina towards the purchase of your home. And it's not a loan. It's usually forgivable over five years. Then with ESG funding, we're able to help families at risk of homelessness, either avoiding eviction and things like that, or families that are literally homeless, living in their cars, or you have some units living in shelters. We're able to provide the deposit and some rent for you to, to help you stay in place. And with COVID funds, we're actually able to do more. I'll talk about it, what we did last year. And we still, we still have COVID funding to help more families. We also have minor repair program. We've actually invited three other agencies to help us. We have the Rebuild, we have HomeWorks and Habitat. And they provide up to $5,000 or $10,000 towards repair of your home. You must be a senior or somebody, someone living with disability can use this particular program. Gives up to $10,000 forgivable. We have the major rehab, where you can ask for up to $25,000, very low interest, 1% to 3% based on your income. You must be low and moderate income family. And I will share some of the income guidelines to see where it is, because to see that a lot of people fall into that too. Then we also, for our projects, we finance your mortgage. If the banks are not giving you a proper rate or things like that, we can actually intervene and house finance that. I highlighted number seven, because that was a new program. We started after the housing study, where we realized that landlords complain about not having access to money to fix their home, and then they pass the costs to the tenants. So if they come to us, they can get up to $25,000 to fix, rehab that house, keep it affordable, and don't have to increase the costs or push it down to the tenants. So that's another program. We really encourage mom and pop that own their private home, I mean, that own their own homes, or renting, sorry, rented some properties and can use that program as well. We talked about Community Development Block Grants. We've used it here in the city and for other communities as well, for infrastructure improvement, facility improvement. We talked about slum and blight, talked about public service. And we encourage neighborhoods to use this particular grant, to give up to $2,000 for a neighbor, a formed neighborhood, to help them have meetings, capacity building, encourage them to come together to do things. So that's a free grant that any neighborhood must be low and moderate income neighborhood to qualify. And of course, I talked about small business loan and facade improvements program. Facade program is a grant. It's a forgivable loan, literally, where in five years is forgiven. To fix anything, you have to be in the central business district of that city and to improve any exterior activity. I did mention COVID. With the COVID funds, the CARES Act enacted last year in March enabled HART to give us additional funding. The first round of funding was ESG and CDBGCV for 804 and 1.6 million dollars to share around. And then additionally, the county also threw in another $2 million. So the funds didn't come until the summer. So we're able to get different partners to help us. So we really hit the ground running in September. So the period of three months, we were able to help almost 1,000 households, 959, for rental, utilities, mortgage, utilities. We also have food and medical service, but of just, these numbers were basically just rental and mortgage assistance. And these are unduplicated households and multiple years, and the numbers still keeps coming. So that tells you there's still a need, but this is just ending December of 2020. The program hasn't ended, just, this is just the data for December 2020. So we're still helping a lot of clients. We actually have the second round of COVID funds, and that is going to be available again. We're going through amendment of our 2020 annual action plan to have those. It's an additional $4 million again to address COVID. So rental assistance, mortgage assistance, multiple months of assistance that we can I'll talk about your sub-receipients. You've got $60,000 to allocate between all these sub-receipients. And pretty much, nobody knew, actually, C-I-S, Center for Schools, did not apply this year. So Greer Summer Program requested 7,000, there's a recommendation for another, for seven for this year. The Senior Program requested 8,600 for work categories for seniors. That was not approved for that particular activity, because it didn't, it wasn't an eligible activity for us to use on the CDBG. And the question of a substitution of city funding for the CDBG funds, and also that it wasn't specifically a senior activity program, because anybody else could have used that. So that was not, but the 4,000 is for any eligible activity that you want to use for senior program can be used. We have the Creative Advancements. There's the 20,000 requests, there's $14,000 approved for that. Greer Community Ministry is kind of a meal some wills, approved for $15,000, the request was 20. Greer Relief, $20,000. They've been very active in helping with COVID, and they've been really working a lot to help families that are in need of rental and utility assistance. Then one of the things we want to share also is like some of the neighborhoods and some of the activities that we've been doing. This is the Needmore community. We've been there since I've been with G-C-R-A, that's 12 years now. So we've improved Tremont, Tremont Cantin Infrastructure Road. We did the Spring Street. There's a housing project with NEEMIER. They've got, they've just closed on one, they're about to start on the other. We've done a lot of scatter sites and numerous infill housing all over the place. One of the things we want to focus on right now, there's a tennis court, that we are going to an environmental review to have that reused as a pickleball for seniors. So that is an eligible activity for seniors. So in that case, we'll not have to do income eligibility for this neighborhood. Unfortunately, Needmore is no longer a low mod qualifying census tract. So in order to do anything that is not qualifying activity, like the pickleball for seniors, being, seniors being presumed, let me tell clientele, presumed clientele, we could do that. Then the Mountain View project, staff is going to environmental review, but we have to also do income eligibility to qualify that street in order to be able to do anything on that street. So they are going to send income surveys to all the homeowners along that street. If we get 51% of the rest, the total survey size, then it becomes an eligible activity. Otherwise, we won't be able to use CDBG money to do that improvement. Quickside is another neighborhood that we've been doing. This was a site that we took from ground up. We're almost finished. Last year, we did 10 units, actually supplemented the home funds with bank funding to finish up most of all of those units. We have about three or four lots left to finish. So combining all that, those in the center, of course, is the senior rental, and the things around, the Phase 1 and Phase 2 have been G-C-R-A sponsored housing units. So telling that we've, this is another community that when I started, that was when we started the project. So it's taken so long to always use the federal funds each year, just to keep a little at a time. The houses that were sold last year is the range of 138 to 145, and you can see that nine of the units were families 51 to 80%, and one was somebody 50% AMI and below. And we try to have a mix of different housing typology in that place, so you can see different designs, so it's not the same thing that you see in that neighborhood. So all of those that were complete and sold within fiscal year 2029, actually, which ended June 30. We talk about facility improvements. This was a project with the RIC District, the RIC Department, City of Greer. It's a wonderful, exciting project. And the ADA section, that was what we could use with the CDBG funding, is being completed. Now we're coming into Sunnyside. This is an area that Habitat for Humanity built about five homeownership units, actually six, sorry. And then we have a project going on on Fairview that we've just finished, get, we got an approval from you to do 34 housing units. Very exciting. So this is just the conception of that unit, the, the project. So hopefully, we'll be coming in for the full cycling application and all that. The goal is to have a mixed income community from income range of 50% AMI up to 100 AMI. So we will combine this with not just home funds, we will combine with affordable housing fund from the county, we'll also combine with bank funding. Talked about income guideline. You have two areas, any side, Sunnyside is in Spartanburg County, although city limits, that would be a different income area. So this is basically all your sections that are within Greenville County. Greenville County Area Medium Income for 2020 is 74,900. If, when we talk about families having 30% AMI, the top lines, it's adjusted to household size. So if you're one-person household, you're $15,000, you're 30% AMI. If you're making about 26, you're still a single person, you're 50% AMI. If you're still a single person, you're making up to 41, you're 80% AMI. And normally, they're looking at household four, four-person household. That's usually a lot of the things that we see, sometimes three or four. But we use household four to do a lot of things, and I'm going to show you some of the changes that happens. So if a single person, you're 22, and change, you know, you're 50%. For household four, you're 37. You're 80%, you're 59.6. So taking this, Spartanburg County has almost 10,000 difference. So when we do the houses in Sunnyside, we're going to use this. We're going to use the Spartanburg County numbers, because that particular area is in the Spartanburg County area. So it will not be the Greenville County income guideline. So for a family of four, goes down 19, or 32, or 51. In that project, we're building a three-bedroom, two. So it'll be two bedrooms, three-bedroom, two. So household of four, HART looks at it as two hotbeds per person, minimum. I mean, sorry, max, really. So thinking about that. So this is something I like to share, that's called Out of Reach Affordability, especially when we want to describe to people and just kind of put you in the mix of how it affects housing affordability. So when we face families or individuals that are in SS1, and they're getting 783, you can only spend 30% of your annual income or gross income for housing. So somebody with a 783, you can only spend 234 for the housing, because otherwise, if you spend anything more, you're cost burdened. Then if, that means you're spending 30% of that, more than that, you're already housing cost burdened. If you spend up to 50, you're severely cost burdened, because this is gross income. So for instance, if somebody SS1, and that's the only income they get, and is a one person for one bedroom, they have to spend 740, that's basically almost 100% of what they're getting to pay for house. What about the other needs? So now I'll take it again further, not just saying that, minimum wage for a person making Almost have to work nine hours in order to be able to afford a two-bedroom, 90 hours, sorry, in order to be able to afford a two-bedroom, because if you do the math, that you get, I'm going to get into this. And using this to define, further define the housing cost burden, let's take the 30% AMI, and I showed you guys where if somebody was making that 30% AMI. They're actually making They're actually making $11.69, they're actually making a little bit more than minimum wage. So with that 22,000, and if they're a household of four, 30% of that gross is all they can pay towards their housing cost. So in order to do that, the monthly rent they can only afford is 561. If I go back to the fair market rate, they cannot afford a two-bedroom, they cannot afford a one-bedroom. And a four-member household, two heartbeats per ward, they barely look in at not even a studio. So that's why subsidy is important to make the housing affordable and attainable. It's a lot easier, okay, somebody making 50% AMI and gets that $37,000, they barely just getting right for that two-bedroom, their household of four. So they're with $34,000. So like I said, a four-member household requires two-bedroom to be able to make that. But even at that, that 842, that's about 45% of their gross income. So they're really already severely cost burdened because they're paying more than 30% of their gross for housing. This is not net, it's gross income. And trying to put it down to who, the in, the income sizes and who are the folks that we're talking about, workforce. Because when you multiply the monthly and go back to the household size, that's what This is just a little takeaway of things when we did the Complan, there was a lot of eye-opening, and we did analysis of impairments on the Complan. And it showed us that 32% of our total population in Greenville, one-third, are seniors. And a lot of them, some folks are of fixed income. So they cannot afford repairs. So that's where the repair program helps. We want to make sure they're able to age in place, or better if you have a developer that is able to provide senior housing, that for the health. And the other section that I want to actually mention is, it says that 71% of the renters that are making 30% of that AMI, I showed you, are severely cost burdened, they pay more than 50% of their gross income on housing. So everybody down there, they're paying that much. They're paying over 70% every month. And then those that 50% are paying just as well, the same. So when we talk about that, it really makes us understand that the idea of having home funds and CDBG funds to help us keep the, the projects, the affordable housing, the gap financing project by developers is important to continue to do this. And we have, that's why we have an intentional, purposeful desire to make housing affordable and attainable to everybody in Greenville County. So going back to your 2021 allocation, the approval is for the 2021 allocation of 717,593.com to City of Greer for CDBG grant and home grant, including the program income as well. Thank you.
Thank you for the information, Council. The floor is open for questions or comments. If not, we'll do.
Now, you said somebody that makes minimum wage, $7 and something, something else. How much did you say that they're eligible to spend of that income?
If you're making $7.20, if you're making $7.25, the minimum wage, that means that you almost, you have to work almost two and a half times, like not 80 hours, almost 90 hours, to be able to even afford the one-bedroom.
I mean, when you said afford a one-bedroom, what's the cost that they say in a one-bedroom is?
Usually fair market value for one-bedroom that I shared, with HUD provides that numbers each year, is 740 fair market rent. But that's not to say that's what's really existing right now. This is if it were, this is what it should be.
And, and you're talking about somebody just $7, just a one-person thing?
That's just a one-person thing, but you're talking about most of them have families. So when they have a four-family, they need at least two bedrooms or three. So if one bedroom is a fair market value, is 742, but we know actually is 809, depending on the area.
Well, please just one slide back up, I think. Can you show us the difference again between Spartanburg County and?
Greenville County.
That's the slide right there, I wanted to make.
Okay, this is Greenville County. So if the person is make its 30% AMI, making that 15, if the person is making, okay, if the person's making 15,750, can only afford 393, 30% of that gross per month. You can't find, yes.
300 and what?
393 per month.
And, and they're saying they're going to rent what, for 393,000 a month?
You can't find any without major subsidy.
Yep, but I, see, those, those numbers don't seem like they're realistic, you know, because you ain't going to rent nothing in Greer for 300 something dollars a month.
Exactly, exactly. And that's why having projects with subsidies or tax credits that is able to target 30% and below, that's one of the things we found in some of the tax credit applications we received, most of them with the state's tax credit, state housing tax credit, plus our funding, they're able to target 30 and 50%. Actually, all of the tax credit projects did not even, 60% AMI was the highest. So most of them are pushing to get to 50 and 30.
So slide to the left in Spartanburg, before we please, I'll write some of these numbers down.
Sure. Sorry.
That one right there.
So Spartanburg being were lower than Greenville. So if I have to take a household of four at 19,000, can afford 485. And if the household of four, they need at least two-bedroom. Even the studio, fair market value is not 484.
Do you have, what kind of credit score do they have to have to become eligible? If they do it through the home loan, not the bank, not self-financing?
Um, most of them don't even go through the credit score, they don't, you know, if they're projects, they just basically, I don't think most of them go to, you know, it's like income guidelines, some particular responsibilities that you have to have, that, you know, so they don't hold the home buyers, I mean, the rentals with credit score per se, but market rate landlords will.
Let me clarify something because I wasn't sure if I understood this correctly or not.
Okay.
The Need More community.
Sure.
You said it is no longer eligible under the low mod guidelines?
Yes, it's no longer a census, qualifying census tract.
And, and explain to me the, the size of the measurement area on that, can that be defined? Is that neighborhood or is it a, is it a zip number? Or how, how is that num, how is that area defined?
It's, um, the HUD has a website that's mapped. And when you type in there, in that area, it will basically give you the fine boundaries of the census tract.
So it's a census tract?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right. So it could be, could be larger than, than the actual neighborhood and to some degree?
Yeah, but that.
It's fairly accurate reflection.
It's fairly accurate, but it took out that section, I think they went into the group number to move the, the area that we have for Need More, right.
And you, you said, how, what criteria does HUD use to define what the, you know what I'm saying, what the area of Need More?
Qualifying census tract for, I'm not, I don't, not the data analyst for that, but most of the time, I can say that sometimes the houses, the surrounding houses that come by to check the income around it, and they see that you, of course, you're making more than, you know, it's more than 51% of that particular group is, the income has pushed away, so that will move it away. So I can't stay here and say, I'm, I'm not a data analyst for HUD, but those are the kind of things. Just like when we want to qualify Mountain A, Mountain View, we're going to take individual household, send them the income guideline for that great, um, city, um, the county. And they, all they need to do is check, 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 household size, income. Basically, this type of thing, very, it's not, if they, we're not going to get a lot, we don't need your name and all of that, it's just the property address, residential property address. And then you will check if you're a four-family household, and if you're within any of that range, you'll check it. And then as long as we get everybody there, or 51% of the total survey size are within those numbers, will qualify that street as low mod, that we can do that.
Oh, so you could actually go street by street if you did the survey and get the?
That's, yes.
And then qualify that street.
Exactly. And that's how you could do infrastructure improvement. But if you were going to do facility improvement, because facilities spurs out, especially now that is no longer low mod, if it was something that wasn't specifically for seniors and was going to be for everybody, we're going to have to take a radius and then start doing the income of that particular survey size that we feel will come to that, sorry, will come to use that particular facility. Because you have the pickleball specifically for senior program, so that really takes it out of doing the income survey because the goal is for the seniors.
So in, in actual census tract, it actually takes into account people who don't actually live in, in that neighborhood because, because they're in that tract.
In that tract. I think, yeah, like the mayor said, the tract is wider than that area, so it has skewed it off.
So I think you've already answered this question, but environmental review for that street, that's relative to infrastructure. So I'm going to assume this is environmental review for the improvement of infrastructure in that area?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We appreciate your time and information.
Thank you. It's always a pleasure. Thank you.
We will begin to consider this at Council level, and I'm sure we've had some more discussions in regards to this information that you and Mr. Castile have always been accommodating and very helpful, and we appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
As, as you heard tonight, this is a critically important program to the city of Greer. We use these funds very judiciously and very specifically for the things that we do to improve the quality of life in this community. And without these funds, as you can see, three-quarters of a million dollars, there would, there would, there would be quite a bit of work to do. And so we are, we are grateful for the opportunity to, to have these funds. The reoccurring funds from the, from some of the federal programs, particularly the HUD programs, vary even from year to year, depending on what administration is in place. And we have, we have gone from zero allocation in a year to what you see projected for 2021. So we are always grateful to have those funds, but knowing that they can vary, I am proud to say that not this council, but councils that preceded us, and also the committee that works with the GCR, decided years ago that our home funding, which is specifically for home funding, it was to be an investment account. And we have built that, as you can see, through the years. And so as we build homes using this program, the proceeds from those homes go back into that program and continue to build from year to year. And that is a, that is a huge part of our efforts to build affordable housing here in this community. And we were a pioneer in that, in that effort. And not many communities choose to do that. And I'm proud to say that we do have a, an ongoing program through our home funding that is a real help to this community. So it's a, it's a program that's worthwhile, as, as you can, you can tell, and one that we count on very much for a lot of our efforts. This is a public hearing. Having called the meeting to order as a public hearing, I'd like to invite anyone that would like to speak in regards to the notice of public hearing for Greenville County Program Year 2021 Annual Action Plan to indicate that they would like to speak to council in that regard by show of hand. Record will indicate that no one raised their hand. I will ask a second time, by show of hand, is there anyone here this evening that would like to comment in regards to the notice of public hearing for the Greenville County Program Year 2021 Action Plan for the City of Greer? Record will indicate no one signaled that they wanted to. For a third and final time, I will ask if anyone here would like to speak to the public hearing for the Greenville County Program Year 2021 Action Plan, to let me know by showing their hand. Seeing no one in that regard, I'll call the public hearing to a close. With that, we will then proceed to call our meeting to order. This is a regularly scheduled Greer City Council meeting called and convened this evening, March the 9th, 2021. Having called the meeting to order, I'd like to ask Councilmember Mark Hopper if he would to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and then an invocation for council. Please join us at standing.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the light of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which you stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gracious heaven and father, we thank you for the opportunity we have to be here tonight. Thank you for each one represented in the attendees. Thank you for my colleagues. And I just pray that this, this evening's meeting would be helpful as we seek to make decisions that would serve our citizenry well. Lord, I pray that you would help us to serve one another and our citizens humbly as we discuss and make decisions. Lord, we, we thank you for the warm weather and the signs of spring that we see all around us and the hope that it gives us with the hard year that we've had in the past year. And Lord, for those even in our community and across our country who are still hurting from financial loss, loss of health, and even loss of friends and family, I pray that you give healing and comfort as well you can. Again, be in our time this evening, I pray that all that's done instead will be for your honor and glory. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
So thank you for joining us this evening. We will proceed with our regularly scheduled meeting here. We will proceed with our regularly scheduled meeting here, and that includes a time for public forum. In public forum, we entertain those that have comment in regards to items that are pertinent on our agenda. Ms. Duncan, anyone to appear in public forum this evening?
No, sir.
With that, then we'll move to the minutes of the council meeting on February twenty-third, 2021. I'll entertain a motion that be received.
Second.
And a second. Any items of note for the clerk? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Alford?
Yes.
Mayor Dan?
Yes. Counsel, this evening we've got a couple of special recognitions, the first of which is the Greer Civics Academy graduates. They are joining us this evening. Kate Jacito has also joined us. Kate, as you are aware, is our Neighborhood Services Director, and I believe Mr. Merriman informed us last week that our neighborhood trailer is now ready and available, and we hope to see it out and about. Kate has led this effort for our Citizens Academy and done a remarkable job on that. And you have seen Kate on the news on at least a couple of occasions, out picking up trash beside the road. So you've organized several litter events for us that have been very successful, and we thank you for what you're doing in that regard. So I am going to allow you to tell counsel tonight about the Civics Academy and introduce some of your graduates.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for having me tonight. As you may know, the Civics Academy was a free six-week course for residents here in the city to kind of get a behind-the-scenes look on not only how the city works and operates, but who actually does the day-to-day work, who grinds the gears, who moves, who are the movers and shakers here in the city? The Civics Academy, to me, was an effort to keep the small-town feel of Greer, that I and all of you have grown to love as the city continues to expand. And so I hope that all of our graduates that are here and watching online feel that they are not just one in our many thousands of residents, but that we know them by name, that we genuinely care about every one of our residents. I would like to recognize those who are in attendance tonight. Y'all want to stand up so we can applaud you. These- These residents in particular were in our in-person class. They braved COVID and the pandemic and made it to our classes and really made it an enjoyable experience. And thank you guys for being such a great first class to start this program with. And just a little more information, we had twenty residents from all six districts around the city, and they were both in-person and virtual. And our communications department has made a little video for y'all to watch. This year is a inaugural year of the Greer Civics Academy. We have twenty participants from all six districts here in Greer that were online and in-person. We covered all the departments here in the city, and it really gave our residents a chance to go behind the scenes and meet those who work day-to-day and make the city of Greer the best place to live and work and play. I think they'll contribute to success, but don't pick my word for it. Let's see if they have the setting. I can't thank you enough for participating in the Greer Civics Academy. I wouldn't go along without mentioning how important it is that citizens lucky participated in this program, and I think you mentioned in the beginning, and I just like to add this word.
Thank you for participating in the Civics Academy. I can't tell you how important the Civics Academy is on the outset, but I hope people realize at the end how important it was. For those of us who work in local government, having an informed citizenry and engaged citizenry, I hope it makes everything work more reasonably as we certainly deal with a changing world. So having an informed, engaged group of citizens that are buying into their hometown is very, very beneficial.
And that is all I have for y'all tonight. Again, thank you to our residents who participated, and thank you to you, Mayor and Council, for allowing this program.
Thank you. Stick around one second. Yeah. Counsel, any questions of Kate or about her program and how it went this year?
I just want to say, when I heard about this program, I was very excited about it because I think as special as we continue to grow, a program like this is very important to help, you know, leaders within our community to understand how decisions are made, who does what behind the scenes. And so I appreciate you spearheading this effort, and I think it's only going to grow for sure.
Thank you, Mr. Hopper.
Why don't you share some information about how people might be able to join the future classes?
Yes. So we are looking forward to future class probably in the fall. We actually already have residents that are RSVPing for it, so that's exciting. So the work got out. Thank you. And so there will be an online registration through the City of Greer website for future classes, that they can submit their name and address and apply for the next class. It is a six-week course, and it usually runs between an hour and two hours on that Monday night that we meet.
Can you remind us, how did the initial class, how did they hear about the program? How did they market it to our citizens?
I sent them emails and put it on social media, and so just a combination of virtual communication.
So folks who are already maybe following and engaging with our social media and that type of thing, just seeing, okay?
Yes, sir. And HOA presidents as well that we have contacts for.
Gotcha.
Thank you much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
We've got another special presentation and recognition this, this evening. We are joined by Kelsey Proca and who is our reigning Miss Greater Greer. I believe she's got, looks like a princess with her this evening, and so I'll invite both of you to come to the podium. Proca is going to share with us her platform, Be Brave: Mental Health Matters. And if you've watched TV on the past Sunday night or any time in the, in the last forty-eight hours, you know how important mental health matters can be. And so thank you for joining us this evening.
Absolutely. Thank you so much to all the members on the council for allowing me to have this time tonight to speak to you about what an amazing couple of years I've had being your Miss Teen Greater Greer. So first of all, I'd like to express why I got into mental health and what came upon me to want to research it. When I was young, I was relentlessly bullied. I was left out of everything in school, and it was a very rough time. I didn't have anywhere to go. I went to my principal, and he said he didn't know how to help me. I went to my counselors, and they didn't know how to help me either. And I see that this problem is still true today. People used to tell me that I couldn't sit with them at lunch or in class, but now I am here in front of all of you, and I am allowed to sit with people like you who can make decisions to change the future of all of our students. The biggest problem I believe we have in the education system right now is lack of awareness in teachers and in counselors. I love my guidance counselors, and I love speaking to them, but on average, I see my counselor maybe twice a year. And with COVID, with people dealing with struggles at home, maybe they don't live in a safe home, or maybe they can't get the financial need to have internet access for online school. That's a big problem, and that can cause a lot of stress, a lot of anxiety, and a lot of depression. A lot of people, even neurotypical people that don't typically struggle with depression, anxiety, bipolar disorder, are developing mental illnesses because of COVID. And that's why I urge you to please, please look into the data. Please look at our schools and see how much our schools are suffering, especially in middle schools and high schools. Seventy percent of students have missing work. People are not coming to school on time, not checking in on time. And most importantly, we've had a twenty percent increase in calls to the National Suicide Hotline, which is very disheartening. My heart breaks for everybody who was in the same place that I was in many years ago. And that's why I stand here before you, to show you what I've been doing to combat this awful virus and all of its problems that come with it, not just physical, but also mental. And I cannot say how grateful I am to represent this wonderful city. The people here have done nothing but welcomed me with open arms and accepted me for who I am and for what I have to say. Over the past few months, I've raised four hundred dollars for the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, and I plan on raising even more in the next coming months. I've also been able to teach teachers, hold workshops, to allow them to see what are common symptoms of mental illnesses and how appropriate ways to respond to these situations. A lot of times, it's very difficult for our teachers, and I applaud them for how they've handled the situation so far. But it can be so difficult to recognize symptoms of mental illness when you're sitting behind a screen. I've also been able to speak to children about the importance of inclusivity and kindness as this world. Today's culture is so ungraceful. We have to find the peace within ourselves in order to forgive other people for what they've done. I believe in second chances, and I believe in inclusivity for all people. And that's what I've been teaching to elementary schools and middle schools. And I've been so happy to see their receptiveness in spite of all the council's culture and all the negativity in the world right now. And with that, I will get to the reason why I'm here tonight. My platform, Be Brave: Mental Health Matters, is everything I would hope I had hoped it would be when I was crowned back in October of 2019. I aspired to make real changes in the community and not just to have my crown lay on a shelf, but to actually impact my community. And I am here today with my princess. Her name, funnily, is Kelsey as well. And if I may, I would like to give-
Yes, thank you.
I would like to give each of you a symbol of what I've been doing. I've been raising money, and I've been breaking, literally breaking, the stigma of talking about mental health. And if you will, I'd like to give each of you a confetti egg. I promise they are not real eggs, and you will not have eggy mess all over you, because that is not a pleasant experience, as I found out.
Yes, I have.
So. I don't know if any of you are attractive to certain colors, but I'll try to spread the color. The confetti egg is a symbol. It represents how fragile everything is, but how easily it can be remade and reformed. And that's what I hope for mental illness in America, is for the system that is broken to be reformed and to be remade. And if you will, I'd like for all of you to join me in showing your solidarity- in showing your solidarity for everyone out there right now in your community that struggles with mental illness by cracking an egg with your hands or on your head, whatever you feel like.
Our building services-
I will definitely be writing an apology la, later to the cleaning staff. All right. One, two, three. Thank you all for your time, and I appreciate your receptiveness tonight.
Thank you to both of the Kelseys, and we appreciate what you do for our community. I know that if you were out and about at the events that we have around town, you have certainly seen Kelsey and know that she has been very active in our community and, and helping with the museum and just a number of efforts in addition to her work regarding mental health. We wish her much, much success, and thank you for joining us. Little Kelsey as well this evening. So thank you all for, for that. We appreciate it. It's going to be hard to talk, but we'll turn it over to the administrator now and see what he's got for us at this point.
Got some watermelons we're going to blow up in here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Very brief this evening, just two reminders. One, council needs to ensure that they've completed your statement of economic interest is due on the thirtieth of this month. And be aware that the, your ethics forms are due April tenth. So those are two looming deadlines. And if you need any help or any reminders or anything, just let me know. And with that, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
Easy enough. Thank you, sir. With, with that, counsel, we will get down to business. Items of old business before us this evening start with the second and final reading of ordinance number sixty-four, 2020. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by Ben Dillard located at 531 Avner Creek Road and a portion of property owned by Mary Green located at 551 Avner Creek Road from RM1 to DRD. Mr. Matt Mahan joins us. Any new or additional information in regards to second and final reading of ordinance number sixty-four, 2020, sir?
Yes, sir, Mayor. The applicant reached out to staff later, or earlier this afternoon and requested to hold the item. They are working through finalizing some stuff with the property owner at this time.
Counsel, seems appropriate that ordinance number sixty-four, 2020 be held over at this point. We can bring that back at any point in time. I'll entertain a motion to receive, an amended motion to hold over ordinance number sixty-four, 2020 until a request is made to place it back on the agenda. So move.
Second.
Motion, second. Any question in that regard, comments in that regard? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Alford?
Yes.
Mayor Dan?
Yes. Second item before us this evening is the second and final reading of ordinance number ten dash 2021. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of property owned by Roberta Early located on Henderson Gap Road by one-hundred percent petition to establish the zoning classification of our fifteen percent property. Any new or additional information in that regard, Mr. Matt Mahan?
Yes, sir. Staff is requesting to amend at exhibit C- Yes, sir. Staff is requesting to amend Exhibit C. The exhibit that you have with the ordinance right now, the right-of-way kind of stops right here. As we kind of took another look at this, this is already property that's in the city, and this is additional roadway up here. Half of this road at this point is in the city, so we are requesting to amend Exhibit C from the original reading to extend the road right of, extend all of this, bring it back in, bring it into the city and the other side of the park of Henderson Gap. This is Brushy Meadows, and this is Carmen Glenn.
So are we amending? Are you asking us to amend the ordinance?
Yes, sir. We are requesting to amend Exhibit C to reflect this exhibit here. It doesn't. It's just to clean the roadway up from a jurisdictional standpoint for police and fire to be able to respond.
So we would have responsibility on that entire road?
Just along this section. This is the subdivision that's just to the south of the annexation. So the road would start here. Our jurisdiction would start here and go to the end of the property there between Carmen Glenn and Brushy Meadows.
Is that Henderson Gap that we're talking about?
Yes, ma'am.
Are you an entity in the city?
Yes, ma'am. Just this portion.
So none of it is...
There is this small portion right here that is in the city already. And then there's a small portion next to Carmen Glenn that is in the city, just that half of the road. Yes, ma'am.
Do you know how many feet of road that is?
One thousand, one hundred and four.
Is that portion there really a campground?
This is the campground. So this portion at the top of the campground is in. The lower portion was not.
And I've been over that road a couple of times lately. Is it in pretty good shape?
Yes, sir. We reached out to the county. They repaved it roughly five or six years ago.
Is it built to city standards today as far as the width is concerned and everything we require?
In talking with Steve, I mean with the city engineer, you know, it is very close to what our standards are. He reached out to the county also, and, you know, their standards are a little bit different than ours. But the city engineer feels comfortable with the road the way it is right now.
One more time, why are we bringing this into the city?
This is typically what we're doing with annexations. We're bringing in the road frontage along that property. But since we already had this piece here and the piece above that's on the Carmen Glenn side, not the Brushy Meadows side. So from a jurisdictional standpoint, if there's a wreck on this side of the road as you're pulling out of Brushy Meadows, PD would not respond. It would be Greenbelt County that would respond or Highway Patrol.
So if we didn't do this, it would be a continuity issue?
For services.
Yield confusion as to who responds to a wreck, who responds to...
There's that potential. Yes, sir.
If I may, Council, there are some fundamental questions that we're trying to answer here, and a number of this is consistency of service. There is a concern for cost of maintenance. Obviously, we've taken in a road. There's ongoing maintenance costs that will have to be considered. In a situation like this, as you can see, you've got the city on two sides of the road and not annexing the road. There's an inconsistent level of service that we are providing. So when we look at situations like this, I think taking the road in is... There comes a point where it's just gonna become necessary to annex the road along with the properties that we annex. So this is an opportunity to clean that up. And while it doesn't do all of Henderson Gap, it does give us a longer, more consistent stretch for response purposes.
So if there's a wreck on this bottom end of Henderson Gap, it's still gonna be...
It's, yes, yes. And in this case, we wouldn't have standing to annex the road on the lower part of Henderson Gap. But where we have standing, I think it makes sense to do so.
And the property's on the right side of the road. Those are not in the city right now.
And the white is...
The white.
Well, it doesn't seem like it clears up that jurisdiction to me because of that. Because you're still gonna have a pinpoint where it is on that road.
It's not without its challenges, that's right. But at least we know who the responding entity would be. And it helps cut down the question mark and the checkerboard that we see in a number of parts of the city where you've got, you're in and out of jurisdictional limits.
Do you have any idea why did they break that portion of the campground into the city to begin? I mean, normally when, you know, things are built on the highway, aren't they just left, the highway just left like it is? I mean, their road just left, it's county or...
I believe the policy that has been from previous was if it's a county road, it was not annexed in at the time. If it's a state road, the state will continue to maintain that road. So we would take the roadway in for jurisdictional reasons, but we're not responsible for maintenance. So I'm not sure why they only took that section in of the Baptist camp when they brought it in.
Others? I'll entertain a motion to receive ordinance number ten dash twenty-twenty-one with an amendment to Exhibit C. Figure motion?
So move.
End of second.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion. Mr. Mayor, the way we left this at the last meeting, I was not real happy with it. What it sounds like to me is that this applicant met all the requirements for DRD zoning and for whatever reason was not given... Even the staff approved the DRD zoning, correct?
Yes, sir. I will just let you know that the applicant has presented a preliminary plat that will go to Planning Commission on Monday with the R fifteen request. They have already sunk money into the engineering for the preliminary plat and plan to proceed with the R fifteen request.
Well, and at the last meeting, he so much as said that they were okay with the R fifteen. But I don't think it's proper for a zoning to be changed for whatever reason because the commission says so. I think if the staff recommends that a zoning is good, I think that sets a bad precedent if we allow our planning commission to override the staff, who is far more schooled in these matters, and cause these developers to change their request. I know they're trying to do the best they can in the situation, and I support them. But I think it's a bad precedent to set to allow that happen. Noted, Mr. Bettis. And I know that sentiment has been shared in some regard by other members of our council. There is obviously a failsafe in place. Council does have the ability to overturn that directive from the commission with a supermajority. But I think as you have brought to light, there are issues that may need to be considered. I think those are probably best held or most appropriately held, not only at a staff level, but on a occasion when we can meet with staff and/or others that can wreck us in that regard. And I think that has been so noted. And we will afford council that opportunity at a three or a time that we can spend some time on that. Well, I'm gonna vote in favor of it because I don't want to hold these gentlemen up. I don't think, I think we should not. And they've probably already geared what they're doing towards an R fifteen now. And I surely don't want to back them up into something else if they're headed in that direction. But I just wanted to highlight the fact that I think this was gone about in the wrong way in time.
To clarify, Mr. McManahan, they agreed to let it proceed to us as R fifteen, correct?
Yes, sir. They...
They could have let it proceed with Planning Commission not giving recommended, recommendation to approve. They could have let it proceed and let us take it from there.
Correct. Yes, sir. They requested to bring it forward.
They could have, but it's almost like they were held hostage to take what the commission offered them because they didn't want to take the chance of not getting, you know, going away empty-handed. So I agree with Riley on that, you know. I don't, that left a bad taste in my mouth, too, is it almost seemed like they were forced, you either take this or else, you know. Which, you know, to me, they took the or else, you know, because they didn't want to take that chance. They probably had too much, too much money, and they'd rather take something rather than try and then wind up with nothing.
Well, if they meet the regulations and they're denied what they asked for, maybe somebody needs to look at the regulations or look at the, make a decision.
I share your concern, Mr. Bettis, myself. I guess for this particular item because they allowed it to proceed as the R fifteen. But I think you're right. My biggest concern, I know staff would even agree. You know, staff does a great job, but their input is a recommendation, and certainly Planning Commission has that ability to do that. And then it comes to us. My concern is not necessarily a disagreement going against the recommendation from staff, but my, what you're saying, my problem is we've set forth black and white standards. And if those are met, that's where, that's where there is a problem in my mind.
So then, others? Just like we have a motion in the second. Comments, questions? Hearing, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert? Mayor Danner?
Yes. Third item of old business this evening, the second and final reading of ordinance number twelve dash two thousand twenty-one. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by each Dillard company located on Easter Road from R twelve to I one. Any new or additional information in that regard, Mr. McManahan?
No, sir.
Counsel, without any new or additional information, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So move.
Motion, second on the floor. Comments? Questions? Hearing, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Moving to items of new business this evening, the first of which is the first reading of ordinance number eleven dash twenty-twenty-one. This is an ordinance to amend the City of Greer zoning ordinance by amending Article Five zoning district regulations, Section Five, Subsection Four, found under Article R five, special provisions for lots zoned for a garden, court, or patio house. Mr. McManahan?
Yes, sir. As you stated, staff is requesting to amend the zoning ordinance to reflect that an R five zoning would allow for a single-use lot the way the ordinance is currently written. You have to have R five with a development of three acres or more. So a single lot in a, you know, in a downtown traditional neighborhood would not be allowed to be zoned R five unless you had three acres, and then you would have to create a patio home community. Over the past couple of years, we've gotten several requests from numerous people wanting to subdivide their lot, sell it off, build another house, where they've had twelve thousand square feet. Our minimum lot size, even in multifamily, is seventy-five hundred square feet. So we've done several DRDs that we've brought to you in the past where they're subdividing a lot, creating basically a five thousand square foot lot, and they have gone through. So staff is requesting to amend the ordinance to allow for a subdivision of a lot, for a single lot, to be zoned R five.
Counsel, for the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion on ordinance number eleven dash twenty-twenty-one. End of second. Now, the floor is open for discussion. I think there are probably questions of Mr. McManahan and/or staff this evening in that regard. So the floor is open at this point. It's basically just allowing them to build a smaller lot?
Yes, sir. Reduce, it allows for an R five zoning. So it would allow for them to rezone from, you know, a multifamily, RM one, RM two, the smallest lot they have is a seventy-five hundred square foot lot for a single-family home. This would give them the option to zone to R five to allow for a five thousand square foot lot. We have a lot of lots that are, when zoning came about in nineteen seventy-nine, that were zoned, you know, at will. A lot of those lots don't meet the current standards. So we have some bigger lots that are next to really, really small lots, and those bigger lots are wanting to basically subdivide once, maybe twice, to a five thousand square foot lot to allow for development on those.
Would these ones or that smaller lot happen? Square footage or maximum square footage?
No, ma'am. They would have to meet the setbacks in the zoning ordinance would be the requirement. If they subdivided more than three lots, that requires a summary plat, and that is reviewed by Planning, Stormwater, and Greer CPW. Once you start getting further, if you're going five or more lots, you know, potential detention ponds could have to be put in. So we have that check in there where if they start going to too many lots, it gives us that balance where we can have Stormwater step in to offset that.
So this is specifically to create a residential lot that the ordinance already applies to in terms of setbacks and that sort of thing? Is it allowing somebody to carve out five thousand square feet off the back of their lot and put in a home for somebody to rent or something?
So this would be, this would allow for the creation of a new lot. So if you had ten thousand square feet, you could subdivide your lot down the middle, and as long as you can meet the setbacks for the existing house and for the new house, it would allow for that creation of a new lot.
That's a good question, though. Would it allow them behind the...
It would have to have road frontage.
So the regulations for subdivision for plating a lot would be applicable?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. So it has to be a wider lot versus a deeper, narrow lot? Others? Have a motion in second. Any additional comments? Questions? Discussion? Hearing, Ms. Duncan.
I missed the second on that. Could you tell me who that was?
Second on that was...
I think I made the motion.
Lee made the motion, and then Ms. Albert made the, excuse me. Mr. Dumas made the motion, and then Ms. Albert made the second.
Thank you. Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Thank you, sir. As Mr. Watson makes his way to the podium, next item before us is the bid summary. The Country Club Park, the Country Club Road Park Public Address Sound System. Sir, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor Danner, and members of council. We have a summary of bids for PA equipment at Country Club Road Park. We had one bidder, which was Fusion Commercial AV. Their bid was within budget. We've worked with them on several projects before, and we are happily recommend them for approval.
Counsel, I entertain a motion to receive with a recommendation from staff for the new sound system at the Country Club Road Park.
So move. So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
End of second. Floor is open for questions for discussion. Comments in that regard? Hearing, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. We also have a proposal for a summary on the concessions operator for Kids Planet. Mr. Watson?
Yes, sir. Thank you. This is a summary of proposals for concessions vendor at Kids Planet. This is for the building in the corner of the upper parking lot. It was formerly occupied by Cannon's Concessions. Since they vacated, we, the city, have purchased the building, advertised for proposals, and we are excited to have one proposal from the Snow Hut. This is the famous Snow Hut in Taylor's also, and they're very excited about bringing their business to Greer, and they share our vision for Kids Planet.
Think it comes from a recommendation from staff?
Yes, sir.
Have a recommendation from staff on the proposal for the concession stand. I'll entertain a motion?
A motion.
End of second.
Second.
Motion, second. Floor is open for questions. They'd be used more than just shake-dice.
Yes, sir. They'll have candy, soft drinks also, no hot prepared food. They'll have candy, soft drinks also, no hot prepared food, but they will have the famous shaved ice there also.
Others? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Council, we have had some discussion in regards to construction noise, particularly in some of our newer and developing subdivisions. Ms. Albert has asked for a chance to bring that for consideration back before council for discussion this evening. Ms. Albert, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. Yes, this, of course, goes back to Sudeth Farms, and, you know, talking with Mrs. Helms and Mr. Merriman, they did work up a proposal and presented it to us as a, when the builders come in, then they come in and they get a work permit, which they indicated the hours of six thirty, or six o'clock to nine o'clock.
Six to nine.
Six to nine, yeah. And I presented that information to the resident that was presenting the complaints about the early work that was going on down there. And she asked if I could bring it before council to discuss it a little bit further to whether we, I know Mr. Merriman had mentioned, did we want an ordinance, or was this work permit with hours on it satisfactory? I, you know, just wanted to bring it back to council to just get a clear indication, I guess, of how council actually feels if they're satisfied with the work permit with the six to nine, yeah, six to nine hours on it, or if they felt like we should go into any further discussion, maybe doing a different hours or doing an ordinance with the stipulated information on the ordinance. So I just wanted to bring that for council and get council's feedback.
Have we tried it yet?
Yes, sir, we have, actually, and there has been an instance, I think recently, where we did find someone in violation, and we have, we contacted the builder, they rectified it immediately. But as you may or may not recall, what staff's recommendation was to make it a condition of the building permit that's pulled. When you pull the permit, you know, when you sign off on it, that you're going to meet all the conditions of that permit, which includes construction hours being between six and nine. If you're in violation of that, we can issue a stop work order until you come into compliance. So, of course, time is money, and if you're not, you know, you're not working on the house, you're losing both. So our intent was to, and our preference from staff perspective is to do it from an administrative standpoint, to not make this something that is, carries the rule, the force of law, to bring, make a case against a roofer, to make a case against a guy pouring a slab in violation of this. So that's where we are. We have, we've been pretty diligent about it, and if, I'm looking at Mrs. Helms, but I think that most of our building community, A, understands it, and B, has been compliant. So unless I'm mistaken, Ruthie, I think that's where we are.
That's correct.
You're working the gun to the podium. By and large, it seems to work?
Yes, we, as Mr. Merriman said, after this incident at Sudeth Farms, we received a complaint of roofers working early, like 2:00 AM in the morning. Keep in mind that real estate, I mean, houses are being sold so quickly, and with the building material shortage, they just said, we got the materials in, we're way behind, we've got, you know, the homes sold. But it was a neighbor that lived across the street, and he called in the complaint. We visited the builder, and they stopped immediately, and I followed up with the complainant, and we had no issues.
They were put in shingles?
No, they were framing inside.
But I think that, that is a, some of our concern from a staff perspective is, you've got, you've got a national issue that's going on, creating building material shortages, but then you've got the rights of the homeowners asleep at 2:00 and 3:00 in the morning. So what we've got here is an opportunity to issue a stop work order under the permit that they pulled and they've agreed to, and rectify the situation without issuing a ticket and finding anybody. So it's, we don't want to hamper our building industry any more than it already is by issues outside of our control, but we also are aware that there's residents that are negatively impacted by work being done at 2:00 and 3:00 in the morning.
And if I could just add...
...to Friday, at 2:00 in the morning, you had to have a lot of lights in order to see to...
They were on the interior of a dwelling framing.
Okay. Inside.
Yes, ma'am. And if I could just add, I've been here a little over eight years. I appreciate you guys not running me off, but I've only received three complaints, and one was during the middle of a church service. We had roofers. This was about four years ago, and then the Sudeth Farms complaint, and then this one that we received just two weeks ago. I have received complaints about garbage dumpsters being slammed down and being loud, but that is really all that I've received since my time here. So I agree that it's the will of council, but I would prefer to just make it a condition of the permit, and that if we get a complaint, we'll take care of it and make sure that it gets stopped.
If the call comes in at 2:00 in the morning, is that something that go through dispatch and police would handle, is like a disturbing of peace kind of deal, or is that the roofies department?
I don't know. Did the call come in at 2:00? I don't, I don't, I think in this case, it came the next day.
They called my office the next day.
But to answer your question, we, you know, in working with our police department, they, you know, they're on board with this, and they can verify that work was done before or after the hours. So if there is a complaint that comes in through dispatch or something, they can verify it and then attest to our staff that these things did happen. In this case, I think the call came the next day, and so it's a little much to be framing at 2:30 in the morning.
If they called the police department at 2:00 to complain of the noise, and the police department went out there, do they know to tell them they have to shut it down, or is that not carried out at that time?
Well, our police chief is aware that the intent is to make this an administrative function, as a condition of the permit. So I don't think by law, the police department can issue a stop work order, but we can, and we can do it on a violation the next day.
So same thing, although we can't, I mean...
Yes, sir.
The procedure would be to notify dispatch, just so it can be noted in some regard?
We could, we could arrange that very easily. That's exactly how the City of Greenville handles it. The police department goes out, notifies the building department, then they get in touch with the builder and issue the stop work order. So we could, we could do that. We could make that arrangement.
But to Mrs. Helms' point, this has happened three times in eight years, so it's, we don't, we're not really tested very well in how to handle this.
So what we're looking at is just adding language to the permit itself?
Yes, sir. We've already, we've added that language already for all new permits.
I don't want to overthink this. How, in what way, if any, would this affect, say, an existing homeowner from an existing home in a neighborhood who was completing some sort of remodel project that may have required a permit for the project? Does that make sense what I'm asking?
If the permit was already existing prior to this?
Or if a project like that, you know, comes about after the wording?
The permit...
Within an enclosed home where the noise, you know, it's not going to be framing ringing out through the neighborhood through this?
Right, and that's why we were hoping just to make it based on, kind of like our code enforcement, based on complaints. So if we received a complaint from an adjoining neighbor, we would, we would visit that homeowner as well as we would the contractor.
But if you only had three complaints in eight years, it's not a real problem.
I don't feel that it is, but I'm certainly, you know, we have to listen to the concerns.
Ms. Albert, have you had any other calls other than the lady that has contacted you?
She's called me several times.
About the one incident, the one time, she's called several?
Same individual. What neighborhood was the two of them?
It was up near O'Neal Village Orchard Crest, I believe. And we did meet with Dr. Horton, who is over Sudeth, who's building in Sudeth Farms, and they were very receptive to our ordinance.
When you get a complaint like that and you talk to them, do they usually do what you ask them to do?
Yes, sir. We have, we have a little bit of ability.
I'm pretty sure she did.
No, I have a refugee. They, we have a good relationship with our builders, and if we issue a stop work order, they're not allowed to work anymore. And then we would, you know, have to get police involved at that point.
So the stop order is just not of that day? Is that right?
They are not allowed to return to...
And the next day, they have to work at 6:00 or whatever.
No, we issue a stop work order, and then they have to come in for a meeting, and typically would come in and pull a permit or rectify the problem. And we can issue stop work orders for various reasons, if the work's unsafe, and we typically would call a meeting with them and say, you know, this can't happen again. So we would hold the stop work order until we are sure that we have met with the right people and they understand what we're asking for.
Other questions of Ms. Helms or administrator? Thank you for the question.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Ms. Albert, any particular action that you would request of council this evening?
I wanted to break it before council, get a council's opinion of which way they would want to go. I'm not sure of the process of that. I don't know if we'd do that, whether everybody would just express, you know, your opinion, leave it like it is, or let's do an ordinance, or let's change the hours, and kind of, I don't really know, you know?
Well, I think the intended purpose for this discussion was that, a discussion. Unless you would like to offer that we move forward in some official fashion, requiring a vote, I would say that the floor is open for feedback, and council can provide you with that. And if you feel that there is sufficient need to formalize it more than what we may offer, that you could either do that in the form of a motion tonight or at a later date. I will, I will be glad to start whatever conversation we have. I think we've got a good starting place for this, given the frequency in which we have to deal with these types of issues. I think that we're at a place that is appropriate at this point in time, and so my inclination would be for us to continue in the form that we have right now, given its apparent effectiveness, and play this one by ear, as they say. That may be a pun in this case, noise, but to play this one by ear until we feel like it has risen to the level that it might require some legislative action. That's my opinion.
Yeah, I agree. I think it's a good start. I think we've got a good policy in place, and Ms. Helms is going to take any follow-up, and I think keep the builders in line with the permit they pulled and agreed to. Obviously, like the mayor said, she's a big stick, and if they don't get mine, they're going to stop work, and they're already on to a point, they're already way behind. The weather's really messed everything up, the materials, the president's...
And the challenge.
That's right. And so, and I get that these guys are under a lot of stress and want to get their projects done, and hopefully this is, this is one of those random things that just happens, and it's something they will have to deal with a lot, but if it continues to come up with a big issue, I think it's something we need to turn, you know, on the dress.
Others?
I definitely sympathize with the resident. I would have made the same call if I was in their, in their shoes. It just seems like, thankfully, the issue is still an outlier for our general experience that way, so I would agree.
Thank you. Some direction?
Mr. Griffin?
Have you had any more complaints, you know, since that, the first? Have they had any more problems with that builder, or it's been just that, just that one time?
No, she called a couple of times.
No, no, but I mean, it was just, you know, the thing that she called you about in the first place, once Ruth and him got involved, that stopped, and you hadn't had any. Well, I agree with the mayor then, that just let it go and see what...
Like I said, you know, the residents did want me to consult with the council and see if they, you know, wanted to address it further, and I agreed that I would. And so I just wanted to... No, no, it wasn't just me or something making up the rules and regulations here, and that council, you know, is in favor of what's put forth on the work. That's fine.
We appreciate your service in terms of bringing it to our attention, and you can certainly tell us that we have had legitimate decision, discussion in that regard, and that it can always be a work in progress and we're monitoring. All right. Council, with that, then, we have one item this evening in executive session, that is an economic development matter. I'll entertain a motion to receive, or a motion to receive that.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session to discuss an economic development matter, and the project homecoming is allowed by state statute section 30 dash 478.5.
I have a motion. Do I hear a second? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Standing in executive session, we stay in this room to use our AV equipment, and so I would ask that if you aren't a member of the team that'll be making the presentation during executive session, that you step out. We'll notify those that remain after the executive session when we are finished.